I'd like to call the Monday, April 8th, 2019, Blue Springs Planning Commission Meeting to order, and if I could ask you, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you this evening on a beautiful evening, and also those watching from home or wherever. Tonight, our agenda is the consent agenda, followed by, we do have an add-on, the public hearing for Novel Place at White Oak. Number two, actually, on the agenda is the public hearing for Daniel Young, vacation on that. Number three is the site plan design review for also Daniel Young, followed by the preliminary plat and the final plat for Tiller Estates, and then we'll have other business, and finally, with the adjournment. So with that, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I move that the minutes from the March 25 meeting of the Planning Commission be approved as submitted by staff.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Mr. Fairbanks? All right, all those in favor say aye on the consent agenda.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the consent agenda's been approved. Now, I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to cover the instructions for the public hearing, but now on the public hearing for vacation on White Oak, we're going to go ahead and the applicant would like to continue that to May 13th, but I am going to go ahead and give the instructions for a public hearing, and then I'll open each public hearing, and then we'll, we've got two, actually, well, one with this one. So let me just go ahead and give the instructions on public hearings before I open one of them. I'll open the public hearing, and then I'll call for exhibits. Of course, that one, we won't have any tonight. Staff will make their presentation. The applicant can come forward, those in favor, and then those opposed, and then I'll close the public hearing, and then we'll vote, and our recommendation will go to the City Council. So with that, I'm going to go ahead, and I would need a motion to continue the public hearing on the vacation for White Oak. So I'm going to open it, and I would entertain a motion to extend to...
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Make a motion that public hearing vacation number 319-6847 be continued to the May 13 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
A second.
I hear a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that will be continued to the May 13 Planning Commission. All right, since I've already read the instructions, I will ask the, I'm going to open the public hearing for Daniel Young, vacation on that, and I would ask the attorney to please read the exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, affidavit of publication in the examiner on March 23, 2019. 3, application with attachments. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, Title IV Land use section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Thank you very much. And we're going to hear number 2 and 3, the vacation and the site plan together, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Ray?
Thank you, Chairman Banks, and Commissioners. Before this evening are two requests related to a new building addition to Daniel Young Elementary, which is located at 505 Southeast Shamrock Lane. The first request is to vacate an existing 15-foot wide water line easement, which is located west of the existing building, which would accommodate the new building addition. There is an existing water line within that easement that will need to be relocated as part of the construction. The applicant is required to dedicate a new water line easement for the future relocation. There are no other utilities or private properties that will be impacted by this. Requested easement vacation, and therefore, staff does recommend approval of the vacation. The second request is a site plan design review for a new 47, or sorry, 5,473 square foot building addition to the existing approximately 47,000 square foot elementary school. On the screen shows where the new addition will be. It's primarily at the northwest corner of the existing building. Since the addition will not increase the building square footage by more than 25 percent, any legal nonconformities on the site do not need to be brought into compliance with current code. The proposed addition does meet all setback, building coverage, and height standards for the prominent civic building type. There are no changes to the site access from Southeast Shamrock Lane. However, there will be some onsite circulation changes to improve the traffic flow for buses and parent drop-offs. Mainly, that is the new loop drive that will be installed to the southwest of the new building addition. As part of the new building addition, the existing parking lot at the northwest corner of the building will be removed. That's currently in this location. The building addition will encroach on most of that existing parking area. There are currently 134 parking spaces on the entire site. With the removal of that parking, that will reduce the parking to 107 spaces. However, a parking analysis has been provided by the applicant that indicates, that has determined that there is still sufficient parking to meet the site's needs for faculty, staff, and visitors, even with that loss of parking. Landscaping plan is not required, as no additional landscaping is required for the site. However, any landscaping that may be removed as part of the parking lot reconfiguration will need to be replaced in the general proximity of where it was removed. The new building addition, again, approximately 5,400 square feet, will match the existing building in terms of materials, which is primarily brick with some architectural metal paneling. Screening requirements also will apply to the proposed trash enclosure, which will be located on the, to the west of the new building addition, as well as any new roof-mounted or ground-mounted equipment that is installed in association with the new building addition. Staff does recommend approval of the vacation with three conditions, and approval of the site plan design review with nine conditions, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Commissioner?
This may be a question for the applicant, but I'll start with you first. I'm concerned on the reduction on the parking spaces, because it may be sufficient for an average school day with teachers and an occasional visitor, but it's the after-school and weekend activities that I don't think are taken into account, and there's not enough spaces in most of the elementary schools to start with, and now we're removing 30 spaces. We're going to have a lot of people out there parking on the streets, and we don't want that.
I'll let the applicant...
Is that taken into account anywhere? I didn't see any addressing of that at all in the traffic study.
Yeah, I'll let the applicant respond to that, how they expect to handle that, any additional overflow parking.
All right, open now. Do you?
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Ray? Would the applicant like to come forward? If you would.
You sound surprised about people who live in the suburbs, so help me God.
I do. And State, you know the procedure.
Dan Anderson, 1311 Southeast Eachard Circle, Blue Springs, Missouri. Yeah, Mr. Phillips, yes, we did take that into account. We, with the reduction of the parking, we have approximately 38 staff member total. So from a school day perspective, the way we've designed the loop, that was one of the concerns we had, because we were having cars lined up on the exterior, and we were having to wait for buses and all that. This is going to allow for a continuous loop, where we can section off the buses where the crosswalk is away from the traffic. We can line up the traffic into the parking lot, actually reducing congestion out on the street. As you know, Grandparents' Day, I don't think we could ever find enough parking for that, but we do have the park next door that we, you know, the city has graciously let us use in the past. We have the walkway over there, so any of those situations like that, the principal and the staff always have that, where the staff will park over there, freeing up any kind of parking there in the front for visitors and such as that.
I just, I know that, again, like you say, there's probably never going to be enough parking spaces, so I hate to take 30 away.
You bet. You know, we try to entertain, is there any way to do it, but we have such a significant elevation drop there where that drainage detention basin is, you know, number one, taking care of the stormwater runoff with the adjacent houses and stuff like that, you know, there was just, there was, really, we struggled to try to get a significant amount of spaces that would help us in the cost for that, you know. Unfortunately, that's such a small footprint of a school area, you know, acreage-wise.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll close the public... Oh, I'm sorry. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Opposed? Okay. Got it. Now, I close it. Close the public hearing, I'd entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move that vacation, VAC 0319-6854, for Daniel Young Elementary, be approved as submitted by staff with the three conditions.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Got a second? Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Casey.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Fairbanks.
Aye.
Commissioner Peele.
Aye.
Commissioners Haney.
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips.
Aye.
Chairman Banks.
Aye. Okay, that motion carried. That will be heard at the City Council on April the 15th at 6:00 p.m., so our recommendation will go to them. Okay, now, we're going to go ahead and the site plan design review, is there anything further with that, Commissioners? Okay, I would entertain a motion on the site plan and design review.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I move that site plan design review, SPDR 0319-6855, for Daniel Young Elementary, be approved as submitted by staff with the nine conditions.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
We've got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carried. The site plan design review has been approved. All right, now, we'll go ahead and go to the preliminary plat and the final plat. We'll hear these together on Tiller Estates, and Mr. Jury.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Planning Commissioners. Before you today is a request from the property owner to approve a preliminary plat and a final plat for the Tiller Estates subdivision as proposed. It encompasses 1.83 acres approximately. They're proposing it as one property, and I'll pull that map up here. Located, property's located at, or addressed at 2805 Southwest 19th Street. It's SF7 zoning currently, and it's approximately 900 feet north of the corner of Moreland School Road and 19th Street. So the property owner is requesting approval of the preliminary and final plat, because they do want to construct a single-family home on the property as allowed by the underlying SF7 zoning district. Approval of the final plat would allow the property owner to begin applying for building permits if the final plat is approved. A little bit of background on this, there was a preliminary plat back in 2002 that was approved, but a final plat was never filed and taken before City Council, so the lapse, or that preliminary plat expired, and that's why we're going through again with this preliminary plat as proposed. All in all, the preliminary plat and the final plat for Tiller Estates meets the UDC Here's the preliminary plat provided by the surveyor. It meets the lot size requirements. They have provided the minimum livable floor area of Class A based on the surrounding buildings, the highest classification for housing, which requires 2,600 square feet of livable floor area. The final plat does have a note, because this property is located along a collector's street. Public Works did ask that a note be added, requiring a minimum spacing of 125 feet between adjacent driveways along, or from adjacent properties, just to make sure that the driveway spacing is appropriate for a collector's street. Additionally, the drive shall have a drive area located within the lot for vehicles to turn around so that lot, so cars don't back up on the 19th Street. And also, they just want to make sure that there is, that this is included in the plat, and the language that Public Works required is on this final plat to ensure the safety of traffic. Another thing I'll mention is this property is in the floodplain, and they did show the floodplain on the backside of the property, Zone A, as you can see here. They do have a proposed drainage easement, and also showing all of the existing and proposed utility and sewer easements on the property as well. No public improvements were required on this, because 19th Street is fully improved, and the addition of one extra single-family home does not warrant any road network improvements. Sidewalks are existing on the east side of 19th Street, and Public Works doesn't require them on the west side where this property lies. The only conditions that staff recommends are that the prior to building permit issuance, the final plat must be approved and recorded at the Jackson County Recorder of Deeds, and with that, I'll stand for any questions. Oh, and we do recommend with two conditions. Staff does recommend two conditions on the preliminary plat and final plat.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Yes, Mr. Fairbanks.
Are there any curb cuts right now where the driveway's going to be? Or do they have to put that in when they're...
Public Works, do you know that?
I don't believe there are any existing curb cuts.
Okay, so they'll have to have a new one?
Yes.
Would the applicant like to come forward? No? You don't have to. That's all right. Are there, okay. Well, if there's no further conver...
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I've got a question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Come forward, please. Give your name, and you don't have to be sworn in or anything.
Daniel Tiller?
Okay.
I noticed at the site that there is a beautiful, older tree. Will that be getting removed, or is that going to be part of the landscape?
Most likely to get removed, because that's most likely where the driveway is going to go. We will be planting some other trees there, some larger trees, because we really do like to, like to keep the same scenery, but yeah, that tree will probably be removed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions before I... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'll direct this at staff. Do we need to add that note as a condition, or just that be aware that that note is added?
What note? Which note?
About the 125-foot...
That is on the final plat. It's one of the surveyor notes, and it's located down in the bottom corner, drive access, only one drive cuts allowed. Note 9 is the minimum distance, 125, and note 10 is the drive turnaround requirement on property.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jury. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I just want to make sure, clarify which note you were talking about.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for the preliminary plat.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I move that preliminary plat, PF 0319-6849, for Tiller Estates, be approved as submitted by staff with the two conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Hear a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the preliminary plat for Tiller Estates has been approved. Final plat, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I move that final plat, PF 0319-6850, for Tiller Estates, be approved as submitted by staff with the two conditions.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Second.
Oh, a second? Second, thank you. Boy, good job, Travis. Commissioner, keep me going. I'm just seeing if you're on your toes.
I would.
Good, and you might be doing this next time. Okay, go ahead. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The final plat for Tiller Estates has been approved, and it will go to the City Council April the 15th at 6:00 p.m., okay? And so our recommendation will go to them. Okay, we have other business. We do have someone that would like to speak, and if I could, Mr. Chris Smith?
Yes. Good evening, how y'all doing tonight?
And if you'll let them know who you are.
My name's Chris Smith. I'm a resident here in Blue Springs, 916 Southwest 15th Street. I'm here trying to find out where the zoning commission is on where they want to zone medical marijuana facilities within the city limits. We are trying to open a facility here within the, within the city. Lots of other cities around the state have already come up with a lot of their rules, giving their constituents and their, you know, their facilities time to work with addresses and time to work with where they want to put their facilities, to be able to put into their business plan to submit their application, which is due on August the 4th. Let's see, Webster Grove, they decided on theirs on March 19th. Kirksville decided on their zoning rules on March 13th. Springfield decided on theirs on March 28th. St. Joseph's brought up the conversation, they're still deciding on a few things, but they've decided on theirs on March 11th. Smithville, March 19th. I want to know where Blue Springs is on this, and why, or not why, but what, you know, what rules you guys are thinking of at this point in time, and how long you guys think it's going to be until you guys have those rules available, so we can properly, with a fair amount of time, submit it with our application to the state.
Well, I thank you for coming forward. I would probably have to refer to the city attorney, and also, would you like to speak first?
Well, I'll, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
I will say that our staff is working on our code changes that will be necessary for the zoning and for permitting of various medical marijuana businesses, including dispensaries. Is that what you're interested in?
Yes, we're looking to open a dispensary.
Okay. And I believe the plan right now is to have a City Council work session that is scheduled for April 29th, is that correct? Where that's going to be the topic.
Okay.
And it's open to the public, and you're welcome to come.
We'll definitely be glad to be there. Do you, by chance, know what type of zoning that it may be? Not necessarily where, I mean, we would like to know where, obviously, as well, but like, what type, whether it's going to be retail, medical, industry, I mean, do you guys even have an idea of where you guys are at potentially on that?
Well, we have to follow the Department of Health and Senior Services regulations, which I don't know if those are final or not, I know that they have published some.
They won't be final until June the 4th.
So we have to follow those.
Right.
And of course, we will absolutely follow the constitutional amendment that was passed by the voters, and we're still working on it, so we don't have anything final yet, but I think the intention is to have it before the City Council by the end of June.
By the end of June.
And do you have anything to add to that?
Not necessarily. I can follow up with you individually afterwards.
Okay.
As to kind of where we're crafting them right now, but ultimately, the decision on where they'll be allowed, in what zoning districts and everything, will fall to the City Council.
Okay.
To make that final determination, and we've pledged to be able to have that in front of the City Council, I believe, second half of May at this point, if not sooner, or soon around then, by June 4th. We really don't want to adopt anything too formally until the state comes out with their formal regulations, so that we don't have to retract, go back and amend it.
Sure.
So that's kind of what we're thinking of, is that by June, we should have something on the books, which we know is a little bit later than some cities, but that's about our initial timeline. But I can follow up with you and give you my business card as...
Okay, that'd be fantastic. We're just, we're trying to write up the best business plan and have the best plan that we possibly can. We want to build a great relationship with the city. We want to, we want to make everybody accept us, and want everything to, you know, to be legitimate within the city. And we, the earlier that we can get some of these rules, and the earlier we can find out where the zoning and everything's going to be, the better, because then we can, you know, give that to the people that are writing our business plan, we can give that to the city, we can start, we start putting stuff together and start working together, and, you know, make this more of a legitimate scene, because it's going to, it's coming to Blue Springs, it's coming to Missouri, and we want to be part of it. And we just, we're just trying to get ahead of the game and trying to be on top of things. We just, we're hoping that we didn't have to wait until the end of, end of June or sometime in the middle of July, when our, the actual, our actual application is due August the 3rd. And so that gives us a very limited amount of time to be able to put together blueprints, put together just everything on the property and everything like that. We do have a property in mind, we obviously, you know, can't, we're not going to put it out there quite yet, but we're just wondering whether or not that falls within the, within the zoning, and if there is any way possible that we could potentially get any rules any sooner than the end of June, that would be extremely helpful for us, and extremely helpful for, you know, for this whole entire industry moving forward.
I could certainly understand that, and part of the reason that the city actually instituted a temporary hold on the city accepting any applications in or zoning verifications or anything like that related to the medical marijuana industry is just because we don't want potential applicants like yourself to go out and purchase property based upon us having a, or the applicant having a preconceived notion of where these may be allowed in this certain commercial zoning district, to prevent you from making a purchase of a property where it in turns not being allowed. And so that's why the city right now isn't accepting any applications for building permits or zoning clarifications or anything that, related to that, until we do adopt those. We do know that they are coming. We fully, like our city attorney said, plan on complying with all of the different state regulations, and then also potentially tailoring those to fit the needs and wants of Blue Springs.
Okay.
So we, again, should have something within the next few weeks, but I'll follow up with you after this to give you a little bit more...
All right, fantastic.
Kind of history as to where we are and, you know, where we're, where we're going.
Okay, well, thank you.
Mr. Smith, do you know if Independence has got theirs all set up yet?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not quite sure if Independence has theirs completely set up yet or not. I know at least some had been talking about it, and they, they've started making some steps forward with it. From what I've heard, Independence is going to be fairly lax on it, but I don't know if they've actually come out with their official rules yet or not. There are multiple cities that I, that I did name on here that have come out with their rules, and they've, they've changed them significantly, because on the, on the amendment 2, they wanted you 1,000 feet away from a school or daycare or church or anything like that. A lot of the cities are going 200 or 300 feet away rather than 1,000 feet. That way, it's, makes it easier for these businesses to exist, and because it's really hard to, obviously, to find some spots 1,000 feet away from a church or a school or something like that. And so, you know, we're, our main concern, we're not, where we're looking is nowhere near a church or a school or anything like that, but we're just wondering, we don't want to get into plans of an operation and then get zoned out of that operation. And, but we need the plans to submit to the state with, with our application, to be a legitimate application. It's a point system, and basically, if you don't have your stuff together in the point system within the state, they're not going to grant you a license. And so we've, we've invested a lot of money in this, we've got a lot of hours, a lot of hard work into this, and we don't want all of our hard work for nothing. You know, we want to make sure that we're doing things right, that's why we want to build a relationship and a friendship with the city of Blue Springs, to make sure that we're doing everything you guys want us to do, and, you know, so we can all work together and move forward in a professional manner.
I appreciate that very much. And I'm sure that they'll get back to you if you'll get into your car before you leave, and appreciate you coming in.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You have a great evening.
Thank you. Okay, now, we have some other business. Do we have anything going on that Mr. Phillips would like to share on downtown?
Well, spring and summer are here now. Not sure about this weekend, but it's definitely coming along. So the summer activities are starting up. Saturday, April 13th, and every second Saturday through, I believe, October, will be the Downtown Car Show from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., so come down, see all the cars, it's always a big crowd, it's always a good time. May 4th will be the Brew and Chew, that's been advertised on the radio, it's one of the radio stations is sponsoring that, and they did it last year, I believe, in June, so they're moving, changing the date just a little bit, but there'll be lots of activities for the whole family there. The Farmer's Market opens on May 4th through the end of October, every Saturday morning from 7:00 till noon. So come downtown and see us, there's lots going on. And if you get a chance... And if you get a chance, you can come see the new city hall too.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much and I think, did you want to? I'm just gonna go ahead. Oh. Commissioner?
Thanks. Thank you, Madam Chair. Green Blue Springs is gonna be hosting a community-wide cleanup event this Saturday, April 13th. I just wanted everybody to know about that. We're gonna be going out to a couple different sites and just picking up trash in the community. So we're starting at 10:00 AM, we're gonna meet at Keystone Park and then dispersed from there and lunch is gonna be provided, so we'd love to see some folks come out. Thanks.
Okay, that's great. Okay.
We have a couple announcements, Matt go first, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna mention that we have our annual household hazardous waste event that's also coming up on Saturday, April 27th. That'll be at Pink Hill Park from 8:00 AM to noon. So I have a variety of, be collecting a variety of paints, oils, fertilizers, household cleaners and things like that.
Pink Hill Park, okay. Commissioner Fairbanks, did you have something?
Well, I was driving up 40 Highway, close to 7 Highway the other day and it looks like there's a structure being built and I think it was for Schlotzsky's and I don't remember that coming before the planning commission.
Schlotzsky's is going in the shopping center right out here at Sunset Plaza. It's gonna be a drive-through restaurant. That did not come before the planning commission because it was, met the criteria for an administrative site plan design review application. And so that's, it was a less than 20,000 square foot building on an existing pad site, which I believe is what the criteria is for an administrative site plan design review application. So that is what, going there is gonna be, I believe, a brick and stone, or brick and stucco building to help complement the existing architecture that's out there and they've recently begun construction, so.
Thank you for the update.
Thank you. Yeah, we get asked about things, I'll point and I'll say, I don't know. So we do need to know, don't we? That's a good thing. Okay, any other updates?
Two other ones.
Yes.
We do have a meeting scheduled on Monday, April 22nd with a fairly good-sized agenda, so look forward to seeing you all that evening. And I would also like to announce that Mr. Nathan Jerry has been promoted to a senior planner within the department and so.
Good job.
In recognition of his great work he's done over the years, so we look forward to giving him a lot more work. That's all.
Well, that's wonderful. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very much.
That's what happens when you get promoted. You get more work.
More work? Yeah. Yeah, I know. I'm ready for retirement here. Okay. Is there any other business?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes, Council.
I just would like to say that I've enjoyed working with you all this last year and tonight's my last meeting. I am, my, my term as mayor pro tem is up and I'm just going back to plain old councilman. But I've really enjoyed working with you and getting to know some of you I've known for a long time. Some of you are new to me and I've really appreciated all your input. Also, I wanna tell you how much we really appreciate your work. This is a very, very important position. Everything that happens in the city, the majority of what happens in the city runs by you all and so, you know, we appreciate your time and your effort. I know it's sometimes it's not easy to go out and look at sites and to go through all the paperwork, know all the rules and regulations and the work session in our great pyramid, I really appreciate that pyramid. But again, I just wanna thank you all very much.
Well, thank you and we've enjoyed having you during your term here and you've been around a long time.
Absolutely.
Who's gonna be the new mayor pro tem, do you know?
That will be voted on at the next city council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other business? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Hear a second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, we got a quick one over here. Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, meeting's adjourned, good night.